Every bit of data that is reported. Did have the exact same start time and end time. That's what goes without saying. This, but this opens the door to me wondering now. Is there a misreporting? How does, how is this invitee, this six, seven, zero, five, five getting counted? If it's counted on yesterday's report, but that's not really accurate. So it, this will show up twice. This'll, this user will show up as an, an, a new user. On tomorrow's report. Along with today's report?
I'll have to see if they count as an invite accepted. On this morning's report. But they will be in tomorrow's report because they were created today.
Right, so they're in two days' report, which is misleading. They go, they only ca- they only joined once. But if you look at two reports, it appears they're, they joined twice. It's not really accurate and also I'm worried that it's not, uh. As innocent as that, there may be further misreporting.
So four invitees enrolled. And yeah, so be there are four invitees enrolled in the section of the report and none of them are Ahmed's test phone. So he is not calculating under invitees enrolled.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, so there are four, and if you go in the invite. There are.
New users.
What about new users?
Is it counted under new users?
No.
Okay, so it's just double counted on the. Column.
You'll see if you count in that column, there are five users with an invitee column. And there are four in the invitees enrolled section and that one missing is Ahmed.
Okay, so yeah, that did not hold that number forward.
Okay.
So let's get, go back to the more important question is. Are, uh, accepted invites counting through the WhatsApp link? The one that did accept, is that the element is talking about that we did validate? Did that user come in recently from a WhatsApp link or is that something that's been around for a while?
One of them accepted the link.
Okay, from the WhatsApp link? I should see that, um, in the report too.
Well, that person onboarded today.
Not until today, okay. What I, didn't yet, yesterday I saw him invite somebody and then they installed the app and onboarded. Did, did we not?
Uh, no, no, John, like I was trying to onboard it yesterday, but you told me, okay, we just, we don't need to onboard. So like, uh, I can link or click the, click on the link, it's open the app in the Play Store. But I tried to onboard it, but you told me, yeah.
So you didn't complete onboarding till today? And one of them, only one completed?
Yes, uh, two completed, uh, there's no one more completed, three completed, but one person joined through different, uh, phone number.
So. That one is counting from a WhatsApp link that you can see, Jerry?
Who, whoever that one person was, let me grab their name. So Rinku Kumar, that, that link was sent via WhatsApp?
Yes, yes.
Okay, did not count it.
And only four clicks. Yesterday. You're not counting any from Ahmed, right, Jerry?
Right, I wasn't counting Ahmed.
Out of a hundred and four, but we don't know if a hundred, how many of those were sent before we fixed the link. How about today? You said only four clicks today?
Yeah.
Out of how many, um, links were generated today?
Thirty-nine.
Four clicks out of thirty-nine. Doesn't sound right at all. That's crazy low. What account are you using, Ahmed? What's the last name on it?
Android, I'm using AMI Android, AMI Android.
Alright, well, let's.
Somebody from South Africa, the South Africa link was accepted yesterday. You do know that, right?
I thought you said zero or.
Um, yesterday, well, let me see, when, when was this account created? Oh, yeah, it's like this person, this person onboarded. Like right when the invite was being sent to them, that's weird timing. It's like they onboarded a minute before the link was sent to them.
Okay.
Interesting, so the invite technically did not credit.
But maybe we have a issue. There, that sounds really weird.
Yeah.
Which would help explain perhaps. Something. Ta- take a look into that. Sounds like there's something wrong there. It's just, it's just still gotta be something wrong in general to have. The o- the only other possibility is that these links just aren't sending, because obviously we know that if they click. The add button, it counts as an invite sent, it doesn't necessarily mean it was sent.
Okay, wait, this user did not have their contact. Is this it? Let's see. Wait. Oh, this user, that's interesting. Oh, this user tried to like invite themselves. They had themselves in their contacts, but the contact number didn't link either. So that is a problem. Why did it not?
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, just do, do me a favor, turn over a bunch of stones like you're doing, I think you'll. Reveal things. Maybe not even what we're, exactly what we're looking for, but some other thing. Okay, and then let me ask, I mean, how it's going with this other situation we had yesterday? I mean, how, hey, Ari, did you, um. You looking, I know you were looking into Jerry saying there's potentially some malicious activity going on?
Um, yeah, could be, because like, um, so there's a chart in the Firebase dashboard. That says like for the past seven days, like sixty percent of requests, they're unverified. And what do you mean by unverified request is, let me pull up the description, means like. Someone he like, they trying to bypass. Uh, as in invalid, so. Which mean this might be from an inauthentic client attempting. To impersonate your app or from immolated environments. So all this sixty percent request, they were like, either like coming from immolated environments. Or someone got our, um, that's how like public keys, like so, so Firebase. Like you should some keys, that's how you can communicate with the Firebase if someone. And it's not hard to, to pull it, uh, from, from the app, like the Android app, you, you can just pull it, the file. Someone who's noisy, who's, he can like pull up that and try to do this, this, uh, request. But there is that, and also like there's the other issue with the users. Like the, they are getting the, um. The other error that says invalid app credential. That, I don't know why that starts happening, maybe in, i- yeah, it's like, so. The captcha, we're already doing the captcha, like if the Firebase thing, this device, it's not, uh, really an authentic device. It's gonna show the captcha, I see it on, on my emulator, the iOS one a lot, like I see what I'm using, uh. Not this phone number, I, I see it a lot. So the captcha is there, but like there's this new thing, it's like recaptcha SMS defense that they added. That I'm, like, I think it's new, this thingy, in kind that broke what we have. And I was like doing some research and I find other users. Like battling with this, uh, SMS defense and they say even like the enable that. I like that button where it says enable SMS, even if they do, they still now have like. It's still like losing really users because it's gonna enforce the captcha on most of the users. And it seems there's like an allow list that we have to apply for, uh. To Firebase, so this whole situation, I'm still on it, I, I don't know. It's still a lot, it seems like a lot of work comparing to, not a lot of work, but like it's still like. I don't understand what's going on or how to solve it. So, yeah, cause like, I, I, I don't like what's, what's, uh, like we got it working and I was remembered, I was like checking that chart. Some days, and I was like always above ninety percent for the past seven days, now it's like drop.
I see, yeah, that was the one you circled, is the sixty-four percent, I wasn't sure what, what that number corresponded to, what, what was that? Again?
So that's sixty percent, so sixty percent of invalid requests out of like, so anyone try? Yeah, you can think like, um.
So the invalid request, so those were, um. Firebase requests that were invalid?
Yeah, Firebase requests and, and they are labeled as inva- invalid.
Yeah, that number is gonna skyrocket lately because. For one, there's gonna be multiple reasons, one reason. Almost every single user from Jamaica got that, got something invalid, they got the thirty-nine error code. So that right there is going to drop, if we were, if we were tracking it ninety percent for the last six months, let's say. And then all of a sudden it goes lower, that's gonna be part of it, but that's not the whole story, so. Um, I would expect some decline, but not what you're seeing, I think, so let's, let's take.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sharing, you, you can see, this is, um, let me just have only this one. Oh, this is the last of the days, so. It was like, like this, then skyrocket. I, I mean, here it just says one, but like. I would, uh, is it seven point one out of twenty K requests? Is this, is the, on the, I can do. In the shop here, it seems has a problem, it says here only one.
Wait, app check request metrics. It's. Yeah, that chart doesn't seem like it's representing.
Yeah, it's weird, um, since there's issue with it, and also like there is this thing, it's called enforce, if I press on it. It's gonna like, um. On enforcement authentication APIs will deny all requests that do not have app check token, so. We, we have the app checking place, it's working, but it was never enforced. And it says currently sixty-six of your total requests are unverified, this request will be denied.
Sixty-six percent are unverified, okay, that's more than half.
Yeah, and like there's like this enforce.
Where do they come from?
Yeah, there's no, that's all that we get, we. Like from Firebase, this is all what we get, it's only percentages, that's all.
It seemed this, those numbers don't seem, the top one says verified request is sixty-four percent. So verified is over fifty percent, but then the other thing you just showed me s- sounded like it was. Unverified was over ver- uh, fifty percent.
I think this is, uh, or, I'm sorry, I think. So this is, uh, it's bound to the last seven days, or you, you see percentages changes later, it's range.
Yeah.
Maybe this is like the total, I guess, is your total since the beginning of projects, I guess. I don't know, what's, they mean total, like, uh, was the date exactly? So yeah, I can see like the data is, we, we limited, there's not a lot of things here to get. There's percentages, but yeah, like, it seems this unverified spiked. For the past days, like, yeah, now like you can see, like, starting in September, things start spiking. And I guess that's the time when we start like.
Yeah, started doing some ad word campaigns internationally.
Yeah.
So I would expect some of it, but.
I mean, this is normal, you can see things, like, but here.
Yeah, what day is that? That's just, uh, a few days ago, okay.
Yeah, but here like this too.
Was that what potentially one, one bad actor that tries to exploit our systems?
Yeah. But also there's this other issue from the other user that Shantel reported, like this, this other issue, where is it? Um, where is it? Yeah, it was like in here, yeah, this, this other issue.
Right, this is a, this is a US-based user.
Yeah, so. This, this error, it's gonna go as. Unver- un- invalid request.
But we haven't changed anything, so why now?
Well, we, we did not, like, we did not, nothing changed, I checked, because, I, I, okay, I, I also checked our certificate. It did not change or updated still the same. And also like invoice certificate, because they don't get expired, like they have a hundred year. To be expired, not like, alright, so if it's there, it's there. Yeah, so I don't know what's going on, the only thing, it's like this, this thing is, you know, like this is, this thing is, um. That they added here, this is new, uh, I didn't saw it before, this fraud prevention, this. This, yeah, and if I press on it. Okay, I think something happened, yeah, yeah, I get like there was an issue in never landing a captcha.
Okay.
It's not even, the button's not even working for me, and I remember. There was no such thing as this, this is new, maybe they added it and they like enforce it for all users by default, something like that.
Right, cause maybe, you know, you know how it is, there's al- always the bad actors are always a little bit ahead of the police. And so the. Law enforcement is always behind trying to catch up, so there, maybe, as hackers, they'll find new ways. The people trying to defend against it, they have to come up with new defenses, so maybe this is a new defense, but it's not fully tested, cause it's so new. That's a speculation. I don't know, cause they'll always find a way around, like then, then your next six months from now, there'll be another way around, and then there'll have to be another defense, potentially. I'd like more information on that. But also, I wanna suggest too, we, we could probably reach out to some of these users, especially they're, um. Local over here in this area where we have a good dialogue, uh. I remember you said once before, I mean, you can install console logs. Uh, on a user device if they agree, and maybe that would help us.
We can do more login and see. Hmm, hopefully the logs that we're gonna do, it's gonna show, show something that helps us to, like one of the things that Jerry has said, like. Log the app hash or like the certificate hash, anyway, like log as much as possible and. Try to see what's, what's in there.
Do you need to have access to the user device for that?
No, just the user key, so we can, I can, oh no, it's gonna be, uh. Yeah, I mean, we're just gonna be pushing OT updates with console logs.
Okay, so we could do an OT update with the user. To get the best.
Yeah, the OTA is gonna be published for everyone.
I thought you can do it per user key.
No, we can, that was when we just, we were just starting using it and we did it per user key. But I think it's fine, even if we're gonna do a, an OTA, it just console logs, it's nothing harmful, like.
Okay, performance issue though?
No, it's just a console log, like there's no issue at all.
Okay. I mean, imagine there must be some type of network traffic, right?
No, just a co.
How do you get, how do you get the information if it doesn't?
Like decision replay?
Right, that's a performance hit, for instance.
But like decision replay, it's always there.
Yes, it is, and it's a performance decline for everybody.
I'm not sure I'm following, cause like decision replay is, it's for everyone there right now.
Yes, and it is a sacrifice, we choose to deliver that on all the devices, but.
Deliver what, like, what you mean to deliver that?
We, we install set, century, session replay, which is, it takes a toll on the performance, a little bit of a toll, right?
I mean, yeah, but isn't it the case right now for everyone?
Yes, all I'm saying is. As we add. Performance hit, it, it, it's not gonna be like a.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're thinking, I, I didn't just a console log, it's like, it's like you can think of it. Like one kiloby or something like.
I just, I know that every little thing adds up, and I, I don't think it's gonna be. I just, I do wanna be mindful over time. We add a little bit here, we add a little bit, not just with.
We're gonna remove those logs after like we've, we, we resolve this issue, it's. This is all for.
With another OTA, or how?
Yeah, with another OTA and the, the subsequent bills, they won't have that.
Yeah, I, I get it, okay, so, let's do that, um. You, so you don't necessarily need. Uh, any particular users information, you, you would just.
No, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And we don't do that right now, we don't have, why don't we just always have console logs then, why not?
Console logs is like, you need to know what to log. You can, and that's, this is what's tricky about this one, like I'll just like. Try, uh, guess what would could be helpful in this Firebase issue? And we keep logging, doing OT updates until we get something.
Okay, I see. Okay, so it looks like at the end of this last year. They added this feature, this.
Yeah, also says here enterprise.
Yeah, they told Jerry about that, or maybe it was AI that I talked to and, and suggested this enterprise support. Remember that, Jerry, I sent you something?
Yeah, and I, I found it in the console. And I, I saw it said that this helps against SMS pumping, I'm like, oh, this is like what they're complaining about.
Mm-hmm, what were you gonna say, I mean?
I was gonna say, yeah, also like, there's this others fixed by Jerry. And that Jerry suggested, that could come in handy.
Okay. Well, okay, what's next?
Um, should we go with? Do the fix that Jerry suggested, because he worked on mutation, I need to do the, the front and implementation.
What would, what would that be, Jerry?
Well, we got some magic going to where we could just say screw Firebase if they don't, if they don't let us allow a number in. Uh, we're gonna send them a link that they're gonna click.
Yeah.
Through their SMS.
Is it safe?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's behind the same carrier checks we have.
Carrier checks, okay.
So we have, you know, the carrier checks, let me make sure that it's a carrier, so nobody can get in with the void number. And SMS is the link to the person. And then they click the link, and then the app knows the phone number. That it'd be looking for, and then it calls a query. And then it gets an authentication token from the backend, then it uses that one-time token to authenticate. And then we proceed onboarding as normal. And we could, we could like trigger it all automatically, like we, we don't have to like prompt the user. We can just do this anytime there's like an error thirty-nine or something from Firebase.
Okay, I, I have a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so. If you think about it, all this issue that's happening right now, the issues that we're facing is because. Firebase is trying to protect us, now it's trying to enforce a lot of things. Because SMS is, is, is not cheap, so. We, when we're gonna do that, Jerry, we're like, think of it as someone like with bad intention. I was just gonna be just sending SMS, or do we have any checks on our side?
Well, we have the carrier check.
That's a big one, but is it good enough?
So, I'm, I'm gonna use my phone number.
You would only be able to cheat one time, I suppose, right, because your phone number is connected to a, a carrier. You know what I mean, like you wouldn't be able to mass, like spam from the same phone number. You, you know, because like you can't create, you, you cannot create multiple phone numbers for your carrier.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Right, Jerry, is that kind of a, a logic?
Right, it's only tied to your one number.
Unless we're overlooking a workaround. But I don't, I don't see how, like.
Only workaround would be is.
You'd have to go to your carrier and say, give me time, you'd have to pay for like, give me more numbers.
But. Now, what, what, what are you gonna get out of that?
Not much, yeah, it's the people that wanted you, thousands and thousands of these, that's the problem.
So. The only thing I could say is, uh, brute forcing, if maybe somebody wanted to try and brute force this to get their way in. Um, maybe we could, we could pick that up on IP address.
Look, before we even go down this rabbit hole, what are we? Preventing or trying to?
What we're, what we're doing is, so Firebase has this. Stance on for error thirty-nine is that they're just not gonna let these users in.
Yeah, and I, I'm only seeing that, I, I would say like the high ninety percentile for. Users in Jamaica, it's not, I don't ever see it with u- users in South Africa, so. I mean, at, at this point. I just, I just turned off the ads in Jamaica and I'm thinking that we go back to that eventually. So if that's the only thing we're solving for the error thirty-nine, we don't need to solve that, but if we're solving more than that.
It could be anything that Firebase does not allow the user to sign it.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about what are the other things, what, when, what, what other times is this happening?
Yeah, a timeout, uh, we can ignore that because we want it, like too many, yeah.
Okay, so. That is happening, um, sometimes. What else? I've seen other ones, like the one you just showed, I mean, can you share your screen again, I, I like. There's the one that Shantel sent. Let, let's look at that here, I want, I, I wanna understand that one, that's a, that's a United States-based user. And it's a weird error that I've never seen before, and I think it is corresponding to stuff we've done recently. I, 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 yeah, let me take this conversation in a different direction, I feel like we're. Treating symptoms and not treating the disease. I think we caused the disease somewhere, we've, we've infected. The project in some way, in a new way. Um, and I don't wanna just go to the symptoms of it, I wanna find it, what, what did we do, why did this happen, like is this something we did recently? This is new, so what is this? What, what happened here? Let's go, let's go case by case.
I remember this error.
Yeah.
We were having, and you see this error, we, we had it because. We, you see this chart two, five, six, it's.
Yeah, I recall that, okay, yeah, I haven't seen this for a long time.
Yeah, so. We got that, we, we just like, we didn't know that we had to add it somewhere, we're like somewhere buried. In the dashboard, we have to add it so the app can confirm, like it can verify everything that it needs. This happens with, when this, like. This chart, so this, this, it's, it's app, I, not each app, but like the app when it's installed, it's signed with this certificate. And we know this, like think of it as like a passkey for the certificate, like we know it. And we, 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 we're registering it, but like it seems now, this app was like. Signed with a different certificate, that means it has. Signed with a different certificate, that means it has a different pass shell. And that we're not registering it, and it failing, so, I don't know.
But you lost, you, you lost a little bit, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Back up a little bit.
Hmm, uh, okay, so.
Why did it, what, what changed, I'm confused.
We did not change, it, 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 it's like from this error, it should be changed, but we did not, like, cause. To change that, that means we have to sign the app with another certificate. We did not do that, like we still have the same certificate.
Firebase thinks we did.
Yes, we did not, the only thing that I'm thinking about is maybe this user, since this is Android, maybe this user. He got some app. That's protect your device from viruses.
Let's find out, yeah, okay, so that's a good theory, Chantel, are you, you're talking to this user, right?
Yeah, she hasn't responded to my last message that I sent last night, but yes.
And where did you send it, via circles?
Yeah, cause it's like if she can't fully get.
Yeah, yeah, I guess she's in on her tablet.
Yeah.
In the same account?
Sounds like it, yeah.
So there's more information here, I mean, this user is logged in on a tablet, I don't, I, I assume it's same account, perhaps that's why Firebase. Is not liking it, like she's already authorized now on a different device, is that possible?
No, it's not the same, no, this error does not say that. It's like different, it's. While, what I'm, what I'm, my theory is, is like this user has some kind of app installed, that's trying to protect his device from you install the app. And what it does.
Yeah, I, I, I'm following you on that, let me ask Chantel. You, I didn't get the information I was looking for yesterday. I, I don't understand why this is a, an existing user trying to log in, like why did she ever log out? And.
Yeah, I asked for that and she just hadn't responded.
It's, um, seems unusual to me, I mean, that this is an existing user. Unless maybe, okay, if this, if your theory is right, I mean. Could she be an existing user, install the app you're, you're talking about? And then the app conflicts after she's logged in, or would the conflict only happen during the login attempt?
Yeah, the conflict will happen only on the login.
Okay, could that, okay, so that's what I kinda thought, but that makes it less likely. That, that's what's happening because this isn't a new user.
But why this users trying?
That's my question, why are they logging in at all? Now, we do have a separate issue. That we need, this, this very urgent issue of people are getting logged out unexpectedly. And. Let's, okay, let's. Go down a different path for a minute without getting too far off the subject, but I do want to make sure we're addressing that. Cause, um, yeah, we have compounding issues, Ismail, uh, it, it seems that we are. Getting a lot of people logged out unexpectedly, Jerry suggests something about, um, cache, the persistent cache maybe. Um, I didn't remember exactly how he worded it, but I know you did a lot of work with cash lately. Is it possible that?
But it's not with the persistent cat, not with the user logging out, I, I, those values. We didn't, like not all caches the same, for example, if you're, I'm working on cache for. For, uh, for chat, it's not gonna affect cash for the user profile, I'll begin on logging out. Uh, they're not, sometimes they're not even connected at all. Um, especially if I'm storing like something in a atom, where the other ones stored in, I don't know, Polcash for example, but they're not even the same tools. Which I'm not saying it's, so, and then you, we say logging out, but are they actually like, cause I, I read. I'm getting a lot of mixed feedback here.
They are onboarding unexpectedly.
They're, so they do go to the onboarding screen?
Yes.
Hmm, and is this happening to multiple users, you said?
Yeah, I've got another one, I put it in development channel and, um. Jerry followed it up with a question yesterday.
Yeah, I read that chat, but, um. Okay, so I remember one, when you had yesterday, you were saying that. That user was having that experience, you said they ended up not going through onboarding, just through the splash screen, like the app restarts.
No, they went through onboarding.
Unexpectedly, okay.
And now I don't, I haven't spoken to this person. I'm looking at, I'm watching session replays for onboarding, because I'm doing my investigations. But the, but I'm coming across users that are super active, lots of session replays. Um, and then unexpectedly seems like there's going through the entire onboarding, this user did not complain. I think a lot of people are just, you know how like if you're on a banking app or banking website, you step away for a couple hours, you come back, you try and. Click on something, it makes you log back in, I think they're, I think they're probably thinking, oh, this is normal that I got logged out, and they're going back to the onboarding and not complaining. And I'm starting to see this more often, um, very unexpected, so we're not necessarily getting the reports of it. But like this one in onboarding, it seems like his last session ended with him just background in the app, and then his next session started. At the signup screen.
On a very, very, like.
Very, yeah, press the pink button. So what's your name, and then that could explain what Amin is looking at here, where like, cause we're, why would this user? Even be onboarding? She's an existing user as well. Um, that's why I'm saying we may have compounding problems here, like. User getting unexpectedly logged out, then we're having Firebase, so.
They shouldn't be connected to Firebase at all, cause after they sign.
No, um, like I said, compounding issue, separate but compound, one problem, a new problem that didn't, not necessarily related.
I mean, the only thing that's what happened is if they lose cash, like if they, or it's not even cash, it's more like a value stored on the device.
But you've been doing tons of work around that, it only, it stands to reason.
Uh, like I said, it's like two different areas, like they're not even connected whatsoever.
Let's dig a little further into that and see if there's a correlation, so, so Jerry, this one, is Jeff, Jeff Nudson, this guy. Did it look like the session before his login? Do you see an amplitude like he logged out? It didn't show me anything like that in session replay.
Also, if we can find any patterns between these users, if no more than one.
Right, another. Yeah, Kim, Kim Stewart, she said she'll be in the middle of typing. A message and log, it logs her out. And it's happened to her in multiple, uh, builds lately, she said, she's reinstalled, she's in the latest, latest. She, she was thinking it had something to do with like the longer the messages that she types, I don't know if that's. Maybe just a misperception, but it'll be like in the middle of her typing.
You're saying the user that you needed to research?
Yeah, the one that you commented on, his name is Jeff, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, the one has unexpectedly logged out?
Yeah, there's. A session before that, a few hours before, it wasn't like a few minutes before, it was a few hours before. It seemed like he just background of the app as normal, the last thing I see in Sentry is. App in the background, so that seems like. From the logs, I see standard user experience, finished using the app. Put it down for a few hours, comes back and he's at the, the login welcome, you know, the signup screen.
Yeah, his, um. Yeah, so. Yeah, uh, in his amplitude, all I see is he, yeah, he was in nine-one-six events. And one minute later, he reopened the app and he was at the welcome screen.
There we go, there's another example right there, um, we have a problem. That maybe happened to the one that Amin is showing us on his screen, in fact, we should, we should take a look at that, like. But that, I think I did, and that was, that one confused me because I didn't see. Maybe I didn't, I don't remember if I looked at those sessions, I've been looking at so many, but we should look at this one. Chantel, you have the user, you have the name of this user, I don't know if you have the user key, but.
I can get it because I have her name.
Okay, yeah, send it to Jerry, and Jerry, let's do the same investigation and let, let's, let's on the side, let's have Isma, you and Ismail. You're gonna have the liaison between what Amin's doing and what Ismail's doing, but let's assist Ismail. And investigating potential cash issue that's leading to unexpected logouts, and then let's have Amin. Let's assist Amin in looking into the Firebase issues, and let's try and resolve these simultaneously if we can. Okay, so, yeah, go ahead, Isma.
Oh, no, I wasn't saying anything, I'm just kind of looking through the code.
Okay, so I mean, I think we have a separate issue that could have led to this user here unexpectedly logged out. And then that would. Open the door to your theory. So she would have had to install the app you're discuss, you're talking about at some point between. After first installing circles and onboarding and today, somewhere in that small window. She would have had to put that app on her phone, cause if the app was on her phone prior to the first install of circles, she would never would have made it. So, it's.
There's, there's two things, so this new install, it's in her, in her new iPad, uh, like tablets or. Her tablet, not the phone.
Yeah, she made it on, on her tablet, yes.
So, um, I'm, uh. Do what, like, can I have this session replay for this, cause like there's the things, either like, um, there's this app. That I'm suspecting, like, not suspecting, but I know there is apps that like can, um. So here's the use case for these apps, like sometimes you want to install the same app on your device multiple times, so you're gonna have like, for example, Instagram. Installed five times on the same device with different accounts, um, there's some apps that allow you to do that. And how like the, the app do that for you, it's like, there is like the clone your app somehow, and they resign it with a different certificate. And they install it, there is that, or she installed the app from like a store that it's not official store.
Or there's, yeah, and I remember there was another problem, uh, the T-Mobile carrier had their own app. I remember that like a year ago, and it came with a bundle of apps on your new phone.
So if you wanna install an app, you go through T-Mobile.
Yeah, I remember there, there was a problem there and we had to account for it, um.
That actually happened just a couple of months ago, um, I think maybe two months ago, cause. We were trying so hard to figure out why this guy couldn't get into the app. But that had to do with not being able to receive the code, um, and it was McAfee.
That's right.
T-Mobile had automatically a, a system.
Yeah, and Jerry went to McAfee's website and whitelisted us in some way. Right Jerry, you remember that?
Yeah.
I remember that, it's like for our, our API was blocked.
So that's not.
Yes, it's, it's still a lot of, log out the user.
And we're not talking about logging out the user, in this case, we're talking about why are they blocked with this SHA situation, trying to log back in. Um, so the session replay, I mean, uh, Chantel. The very bottom, go down all the way down.
This is the bottom, um.
You tagged. It's in a thread, so.
The thread too, that's long one.
There, that's the user ID, so you should, you can get the session.
Oh, this is, okay, no, I think, no.
No, that's a different one.
Yeah, this is the.
Do you know how to do it up there?
Do we have a pattern in these, um, users who get logged out, sorry, I'm just gonna ask.
This, so, I just wanna say, this user that Chantel was talking to, I think their situation is completely different for all those.
It is different, we think there may be compounding issues, like two separate issues affected this user.
The one that Chantel is talking to, they haven't been in the app since October of last year.
Hmm, is that right?
I don't.
Here's what I see.
No, it, it says right here, October seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
That was on their tablet, they onboarded on the tablet on October seven. And they've been using the app from the tablet. But. I do not see any activity on the phone since, actually, I'm sorry, April twenty twenty-four. Is the last time I've seen activity from the phone, the tablet was on October seventh. So on the phone, they haven't been on the app in a year and a half, are they even on the most current version?
We're gonna find out.
Well, um, one other thing, when she brought up Melissa Lockett. Apparently Melissa had suggested uninstalling and reinstalling. So that's gonna make me believe that there was something wrong, so since she didn't respond to me, I wonder if Melissa. Would respond a little quicker to see if Shannon, when Shannon reached out to her, what the situation was.
I don't, no, I don't wanna get third-hand information, why don't you? Will you send her a text message and tell her that we're on with our engineering team? And you sent her an email, but if he's available, we'd like to troubleshoot this now. If she has some time. So, yeah, it looks like there's no session replays for that user ID, at least the last.
Yeah, no session replay, no, I, no issue, no nothing. This is, I, I'm not sure if this is correct, user ID. Cause, yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't we see, Jerry, wouldn't we see a session replay on the tablet?
The tab seven FE.
I, I, this is not a social play, this is the feed where we log all the issues the user might go through. Like this user for the past ninety day, he has no error, that's impossible.
Chantel, did you type the number right?
I have their user, I have her, I, I have her, I have the user key, we're talking about, uh, Shannon or Sharon or whoever. Yeah, so I see, I see them in amplitude, uh, yeah, I don't see anything in Sentry, but, um. I see an amplitude.
Uh, uh, version of the app before we had Sentry installed.
April twenty twenty-four.
Um, yeah, it's in amplitude, but not in here, I don't know why.
Because the version, app version?
Oh, it's like the past ninety days, I'm like, I can do.
If the app work wasn't updated.
Old version of the app?
That's what I'm wondering.
Let me see, do we log the version here?
Uh, see. Okay, I think I see, I think I see there her, her replay, which this replay says. If this replay, I mean, not the replay, the amplitude, it says here on amplitude, build eighty-two.
She downloaded it on her iPad yesterday.
I know, this, this is, this says phone. It says S twenty-three Ultra, but I mean, I'll just see where.
Yeah, but she also didn't pass the authentication.
Right, I see, I see where she got stuck.
What, what do we do here, do you wanna? Get the console log, I mean, to figure out why? get the console log, I mean, to figure out why?
I mean, yeah, I can do that and log things about like her session and see what's going on, but most likely I would say she downloaded the app from a, like a store that it's not Google Play. If we just gonna ask her, like, what's the, the store she, she got the app from?
I, I give that very low probability. Like, it's, maybe it was a techie kind of person overseas or something like that, but like.
I know, she, because she has like a tablet, she came in.
Yeah.
Already with that.
Well, the tablet works, the tablet works, it's the phone that doesn't.
Or, or the phone, like, well, like whatever the device, it came in with that store installed as, especially in the US, because I know like, um, in the US, like, for example, I, I, that's why I wanted this session replay, so I can see like what's the phone, uh, what's like, because like I know like some, some phones there, they don't have Google Play, with politics and everything, so I'm suspect.
I don't think, I don't think so, I think everybody in the US goes through Google Play for the most part.
Okay.
What, what makes you think there's like alternate stores here?
There is a, a, alternate stores people use or they can in, install with the device.
Yeah, not, not your average citizen, nothing.
Okay, can I get? Can I get the session replay, Jerry, for this user, because I didn't find it.
Don't have the replay. Um, all I have is, I don't know if this link works for you in Amplitude. I can, can I like copy this event, maybe?
And you, and this, this looks like this is the, the tablet, right, the Galaxy tablet?
No, this is, this, this is the, uh.
The one on his screen right now.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's the tablet. So this one received the code. Or did she get the code from the phone and put the code from the phone in on the tablet?
Yeah, that's how she would have gotten in.
What does that tell you, I mean, that the same code worked okay on the tablet, but not the phone? That the phone has some kind of blocker on it?
I mean, yeah, it should, like, the code is for, okay, can you repeat that?
The, um, this, the same code she got from Firebase worked on the tablet, but not her phone.
From where she either requested the code?
Yeah, she requested it from the phone and it's the only way, because like the tablet doesn't have a phone.
Mm-hmm, it was from the phone, she tries to enter it.
Yeah, which me, which would lend to the theory that the phone has some type of app blocker potentially, right? And it could be something that comes right from the carrier, like the T-Mobile or McAfee problem, or and, and I think, I mean, you were saying you saw this with fifteen users over last certain amount of time, or that maybe, I might be mixing that up.
No, I did not saw it with fifteen, but I don't like, we saw this issue and we fixed it, like, well.
But are you, did you or Jerry look at any, uh, copycat, like, problems that are exactly like this over the last three months, I mean, is this a thing?
Is it me?
Yeah, either one of you, like, isn't there a way to just, uh, search by this and, you know, we could find other identical users situations?
By users that.
The error, yeah, the SHA error, like how we could.
I did, I did, and that's, I sent you that yesterday.
That's, that's where I got it from, okay, so I mean, Jerry did this search and then didn't you say there was like fifteen different people?
Yeah, in the past week.
Fifteen people in the last week, okay, so not everybody, but fifteen last week, there's gonna be a common thread, like they all have a T-Mobile carrier, like that would be a common thread. But, um, what if, what if you went back like ninety days, are there, does it only start a week ago, two weeks ago, a month ago, or has it been going consistently for months and months?
I guess that it looks pretty consistent.
Let, let's confirm, because that'll tell us something. If it just started a week ago, that tells us something, if it has, if it started months ago, it tells us something else.
Start like a month, i- is this the same, I think it's the same error we're talking about, is, it's like a month ago.
Ninety-four events. What if you go back six months?
I don't say this isn't, like, it starts like, is it like the eight days?
Go back to that chart.
Mm-hmm.
It spikes mid-September. This is the same time a couple of things have happened, one, we started getting more international users, I don't think that's connected, two, we released, uh, hold on to that thought, two, we released some cache changes. Um, so what, what, you're highlighting this error thirty-nine code?
That's the same error, so I'm not.
This is not what she got, Shannon got.
Oh, I, I checked Google Cloud logs and I can only go back thirty days, but in the past thirty days, I see a hundred and thirty-four unique results, however, that is still about, there's two or three attempts per user. Each user has two or three attempts, and then there's Amin and then there's Shannon. So if, let's just say we divide it by three, that would be about forty users in the past month.
What about you, can't go past a month?
No, I cloud, Google Cloud, I can only go back thirty days.
Can we pay them more to go back further, that's, that's annoying.
I don't think it's going to unlock.
It's not like we have a, like, a low plan. That's not helpful, like, I mean, somewhat helpful, but I would like to know further. So, so I mean, this one that you're looking at, this one should be discarded, this whole error thirty-nine, that's a whole Jamaica thing that, let's not, um, muddy the waters with it. That's, that's not a problem with us. I don't think, but if, and if it is, it's not the problem with Shannon, so let's make sure we don't u- use that in our filter.
Well, that's what I did, I, I, maybe just sent she's mixing up things, you can see here, this is the error that we're getting for that user.
Well, wait a minute, that's not, you can show me, because that error thirty-nine is not SHA.
I know, I'm, I'm confused same as, as you are. Like I did a search for this and when I pressed on it, it showed me different error, it showed me a different, so I'm not sure how sentry grouping this too, like why it's grouping, it just sentry grouping this error.
Okay, well, let's go with Jerry's data for now, Jerry say maybe forty or so people.
Mm-hmm.
And are you sure it's the SHA thing, Jerry?
Yeah. Okay, that, that's what I've been filtering by.
Got it, okay, and.
The earliest.
Common thread, are they all on T-Mobile, like what's their carrier, like what?
Okay, earliest log I have is from the fifteenth of September. Uh, this person is South Africa. And, yeah, same person. Uh, another South Africa. Same attempt. Then once again, uh, same person again. Another South Africa. South Africa again. South Africa. Uh, same person.
Do they all have the same carrier?
Uh, find out next, once I take a look at this. South Africa.
Eventually, you're gonna get to Shannon.
Mm-hmm.
Unless something's wrong here.
South Africa. South Africa. South Africa. Um, another South Africa.
All right.
So, we go all the way back to yesterday.
I should, how come I, I should see that in session replay, I have not seen this SHA. I've looked, I, yesterday, I looked at every single session replay in the last five hours after we did stand-up. I looked at every single one.
They could be on a low-end phone.
And then there's no session replay, is that what you mean?
There's no session replay.
Okay, so maybe that's the common thread, a low-end phone leads to this.
Yeah, there's this thing, this user has no session replay, like, we got her implicit stuff, like, it's, it's not, it doesn't, there's no trace of her like in Sentry.
So that's a clue, so we backed either a low-end phone or a memory issue or?
No, eh, she has a phone that's that blocks stuff Sentry, it could be reported as like tracking.
Okay, well, wait, we have her amplitude, what kind of phone is she on?
She has like, uh, it, this is the one that Sam, she get, no, uh.
That's a tablet.
Yeah, the S twenty-three.
That's a big, that's a plenty good.
She is, she's, she's installing some, some, some antivirus app that's blocking.
Well, wait, you, you can't mix the theories, we can't have it both ways, she either is on a, a low-end phone and no session replay or not, and we were suspecting all those users.
No, I'm saying like this one, the S twenty-three.
Yes.
Normally, if I search with this phone number, I would find her in Sentry.
I get that, Jerry's theorizing. That, and you, you agreed that they could all be on low-end phones and that's why we don't see session replay, but this user is not on a low-end phone, so that's not the answer.
The reason why there's no session, I'm seeing, again, like I found with the IP, that's maybe it's the same, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
The story is not.
Why do you think there's no session replay for her?
I did a search just like ten minutes ago, I didn't find any, like, do we have?
No one found it, but my question is, why do you think there wasn't a session replay?
Because she has an app installed that blocks actual requests.
That might be possible, so that's, that's a theory, no, so this has nothing to do with um, a low-end phone.
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah, it has nothing to do with a low-end.
Okay, so she should still, we should, I, I should see a session replay for other users getting that error. And I'm not seeing it yet, maybe I just haven't come across it. But I haven't seen it.
It looks like Shannon is the only user I can see so far in the United States.
Interesting, very interesting.
And this person is on a, a Hi-Sense phone in South Africa. Hi-Sense phone.
What, what's Hi-Sense model, what is it?
Uh, U seventy-one Pro.
U seventy-one Pro sounds pretty strong if it's a Pro.
Uh, then this is a, uh, who's this, this is Shannon on her S twenty-three Ultra.
Isn't it?
Four, four gigs of RAM, two gigs virtual memory, thirty-two gig internal storage. It's not a bad phone, it's not like the biggest best phone ever, but it's not, you know, it's not a really old weak phone.
This is somebody, who is this F R L phone, that is Huawei nine what, Y nine? What's that?
Yeah, like I found this session replay to say Shannon, the ads.
That's her, yeah, I saw this too.
Okay, this is one month ago.
Yeah, I saw this, I watched this one, um, go ahead and play it through, do we, do we get an error?
Yeah, there's an error, here is it.
Yeah, see that, um, keep it going. Text.
Good.
Right there, pause, maybe I did see this one.
But this is like a month ago.
Well, maybe she's still having the problem.
But why it's logged now and not yesterday, I mean, logged back then and not yesterday.
Really good question, um. A month ago, that's weird. And, okay. Yeah, version sixty-nine.
Yeah.
How did you find this and we couldn't find one for her, I don't get it.
I did a search with her IP that I'm getting from Amplitude.
Yeah, I was like a week.
And she doesn't have the user ID yet, you see the long string, it's so, she has no phone number associated.
I think, let me see, did that, yeah. Yeah, maybe, yes, she did not logged in, she did not logged in like one month ago.
Right, because she got blocked at that error. Is it possible that she sent that screenshot to Chantel yesterday from a month ago? That's also possible.
No, I see where she tried to onboard yesterday.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we have amplitude.
It is, it is, maybe they did the same thing.
Yeah, she said that she had taken the screenshot right before she sent me the email.
Okay, did she get back to you?
Yeah. I did text her, but she hasn't texted me back.
Yeah, it is, it is like from two days ago.
Ah, okay, found it. From a IP, that's how you found it?
Yeah, we tried by the IP, I'm surprised I couldn't find it.
Interesting.
Beginning like a forty-seven?
The IP?
Yeah, was it like forty-seven or forty-nine?
Was it, yeah, what was he saying?
Okay.
Interesting, okay, so what's her carrier, let's go to the, um, tags.
Hmm, it's not in here, but like it should be here before, I don't know. Think it should be somewhere, should she's using. And it's like somewhere in here.
Uh, what if you go in amplitude?
Oh, yeah, um, is it over amplitude? Like, does it not, or is it, yeah, Verizon?
Verizon, okay. Um, interesting, I use Verizon, I'm not having a problem.
She's using eighty-two.
And if you play this, is she gonna get the error right after this?
Here, yeah, should, it should get, yeah.
There it is, and this is Android.
This is white, okay, wait. The screenshot, I don't remember, it was like this screenshot.
Yeah, you know how session replay ex- exaggerate, like distorts?
No, well, like the background is black in this screenshot.
But this, this modal has been distorted by session replay on Android since the beginning.
I know, well, like, look at the background, it's white in here, and I'll, I'll show you what I mean.
Yeah, I see the difference.
See this one, this one, looks like this one.
Yeah, how, how do you know she wasn't in dark mode that day and not in dark mode today, you know?
From the session replay, here is it, this is why.
That's two days ago.
Yeah, two days ago.
The one you're looking at is a month ago.
So the one that she, that we have in Slack, it was like a month ago?
No, this is, this is the one from yesterday.
But, okay, this is from yes, yesterday, and this one from two days ago.
Or they're, they're both, they're both the same, they're both from.
I know they're both the same, just like the color, it's what's like a.
Right, one of them is green shot and one of them is session replay. So, they're good, session replay always makes the modal extra-large.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm, I'm just talking about like the, the background color of the mod.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, like this screenshot.
Yeah.
Probably it's from this session replay, probably, not really sure.
A month ago?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Because like, the one that's two days ago, it's white, this one is black. Either way, she, she, she's having a problem, I'm just saying.
Yeah. I mean, she told Chantel she took the screenshot right before she emailed.
Mm-hmm.
But it is, it is weird that I don't know, it's, I don't trust session replay.
Yeah.
And we also, we moved things around. Don't forget, like, a month ago, it could have been a slightly different onboarding code, does, it's our structure, so like, that, oh, the gray overlay, maybe there's a gray overlay to go.
True, that's true, we did a fix for that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
But we do, we're getting somewhere, you know, I, I don't think Verizon's to blame, so.
I'm not saying her carrier, I'm saying she has another app, like, installed, yeah.
Well, I, yeah, the last time was a problem because the carrier bundled it and I don't think that's happening, so she would have had to do it herself.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe she did, um, maybe. Like a McAfee app kind of situation?
Yeah, like, yeah, people do install this kind of apps on Android to protect them from viruses and and if you're not technical, you will be like, yeah, I would need this kind of app, I needed it.
Yeah, I could totally see that, especially out of thousands of people, there's gonna be some people, so how, how many people now, Jerry, that are you seeing had that SHA problem? Forty forty something?
Hundred and forty, hundred and thirty four instances.
Yeah.
But a lot of them are retrays.
Retries, so forty something maybe unique and almost all in South Africa.
Most, yeah. I've seen a mean, but that was on his simulator.
How did it mean? How did you trigger it? I mean?
Speaking of what?
Jerry, you said he.
Yeah, from his simulator doing a um.
But yeah, it it does trigger for me because that's a simulator. Like this error. It should be triggered from my simulator. It does.
Okay.
The the dev certificate, the one that he does for his local builds. It's not a certificate that's in the Firebase dashboard, so.
Yeah, like from the simulator emulator like this. So what's Firebase? A lot of Firebase do under the hood? It create like it 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 like tries to contact Firebase and says if this is like a valid request. It's if it and it requires the second time. That's where it does the reporting. In on the second time, the first one, just to verify if it's all good and then it retries. And if it fails again, then it does, it do the reporting. For my end, it showed me the captcha. Like the first one fails and it shows me captcha. Like I see captcha all the time.
Yeah, we can, if we want, maybe we can just implement the captcha as a fallback.
It's implemented, but this is different. Like, it's like the captcha, it's um, if I remember. Like, it's the, yeah, it's it's like Google or that decides this device needs to see a captcha or not. It's not asked to trigger it. Back in time, we had it misconfigured and it was like triggering captcha for a lot of users.
Okay. Well, of the other users, Jerry, is there a common thread? Like, maybe they all have the same device or the same carrier and that carrier bundled a certain app.
I see Samsung, I see Huawei, I see HiSense. I just checked over that. And now we have to go and check the carriers.
Yeah. I bet the carrier matches. Okay, so if this is the only one in the last month or two agreed in the US. Maybe it's a very rare case where they have some kind of third party app. And it's not something we should spend all day on. And it sounds like we're pretty confident this is not a widespread issue, right? And it it seems like it's not because I would have seen it. But and we also think she was not unexpectedly logged out. Well, yeah.
I don't think she was logged out. I think she was having issues loading in.
Yeah, did this phone, when was the last time this phone was even logged in for?
April of twenty twenty four.
I wish we could ask her like which, like, I would not want to ask her, have you installed a security app lately? But she won't really remember or no. I wish I could, we could say specifically like a name of an app. Would it be like an antivirus kind of app? I mean?
Yeah, that's that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, maybe Chantel sent her another message. Ask her if she is aware of like remembers installing like a antivirus app over the last few months. Okay. Well, let's not spend too much time on this. If it's one off.
Okay, this person is on a carrier called MTN. And. Okay, next one is also MTN.
Uh huh, okay.
All right, we only tested two.
It is so far so good, though.
Go to com. Another MTN.
Pattern is developing.
Now, the other thing is, is how many people got through that were on MTN?
Maybe none.
Let's see, grab this one. MTN.
Uh huh, okay.
Cell C. Go to com. MTN, but it's the same person? No.
So what what would we, how would we uh overcome this? Like, let's say MTN is bundling some kind of security antivirus software that's
Telcom.
Messing us up. What what will we do? Is there a way to reach out like we did with McAfee?
Well, that was part. It would have, you'd have to know if the the phones are preloaded with anything. But McAfee, so McAfee's issue was that we weren't unable to access our API. If MTN has an issue with Firebase, that I mean is possible but unlikely because um I mean Firebase is used in a bunch of apps. So if they're not able to access Firebase API, I feel like there would be more widespread issues here. So. I would say, I mean, we have that. We have that link system that I that I designed this morning.
Yeah. That makes me a little nervous, um, but maybe it's okay. And it what is, so will require the user to go through an extra step, right? Like they would, it would fail first, then we would try a secondary?
So they would be all, I mean, the user honestly wouldn't notice anything different except that they'll try to, they'll try to enter their phone number. It'll spin and like, okay, I'm sending a code two. And then if we fall back, then automatically if in the background, we just call the new mutation that sends the SMS. And then when we send them to the verification screen, instead of saying, enter the six digit code, the verification screen says, click the link in the text I just sent you. And then they go and they click that link and then it authenticates them.
I'd I'd want to really analyze how the, how that would couldn't be exploited. Like, what happens if that link gets shared? So is it a one time?
Yeah, it's one time. Firebase.
Because people generate those links like randomly?
So you can generate a link. So let's say I enter your phone number and I generate a link. Your phone number gets texted the link. So let's just say if I wanted to be malicious, that would be is.
Yeah, I'd start texting myself links.
I'd have to text you a link and then from your phone, I'd have to send that link to me. But then still, we can add an extra layer, but then this would, this would involve some potential of not. I I would say I don't recommend doing this, but we if we could keep the app in the authentication state, so you can't close the app. Because what we can do is we can keep the intended phone number like in that state. And then when you click the link, we can use the phone number as an additional verification key when passing that token.
Well, let's hold on to that.
Yeah, the only other way to be malicious is you brute force it a trillion times.
Yeah.
And we could put stops on that, too.
Yeah. Well, we still have a lot of questions to answer. I don't know if uh links are getting clicked or sent properly for WhatsApp. Did you ever figure out how that one was, you you came across a problem where it was like supposedly clicked before it was sent? That was weird.
It was like somebody that saw their own number and like tried to invite themselves. And the reason it allowed that is because their user key wasn't linked. Um, however, uh, I was able to go into that and see that there was something going on with the phone importing when you imported your contacts. So there was something that was preventing contacts from getting matched all the time. So I took one of the problem numbers and I entered it in my phone after the fix. And I did a contact sync to see if the number would properly connect and it did in my test. With a South African number that I tested from my phone. I I tested registering a South African number in my contacts.
So as far as you're concerned, it would register, it would count as a accepted invite?
Yes, this would not interfere with accepting the invite. The no, well, sorry, this is not linked to the invite whatsoever. This is actually linked to the contacts. I checked. I checked the accepted invites and there seems to be no problem there as far as like invites not getting counted. Like, I don't see people, I don't see somebody who on boarded who was in, who on boarded after an invite was sent to them by somebody else. I cannot find a case of that. And I'm not even looking for a click. I'm just saying the number one, two, three, four, five onboard after getting sent an invite from their friend in South Africa.
It smell, I'm gonna send you something here. This button is still. We're having trouble clicking it. You could see this user tapped below the button, seems. I'd like to just make it like a little larger area.
Tapable area?
Yeah, and maybe we we move the uh terms little terms and conditions thing up just a tiny, tiny bit and then make a larger tappable area around that button. I know, may and maybe they didn't. Maybe they're tapping something on their nav bar. It's also possibility. But either way, because that was the end of their session. Tapped there and that was it. Actually, you tapped above it and swiped above it.
Is this before the shimmer and all that? Looks like it.
No, it shimmers. They tapped, actually tapped the terms and conditions. But I don't know that it opened it because the screen didn't change color or anything. And then they swiped above.
Over the C user or US?
This is a South African user. But let's just make it a bigger area. Oh, yeah, they did. They swiped, yeah, didn't. It's using twenty minutes, you know? Okay, um, and and have you gotten anywhere, Ismail, with like determining why people are getting unexpectedly logged out?
I mean, I'm I'm looking at it. So the thing is I guess let me ask a few questions if might help. First of all, uh, do we have, are they all on a certain platform or are they mixed platforms?
Good question. What's Kim Stewart and uh and then the one I said, the one I said was, let's see. iOS. I don't think they're different platforms. I think it's iOS and Android.
Okay, so might it have some of those platforms, okay? Yeah, I'm I'm, I don't see any major changes to how cash works in terms of persistent user. I mean, has this, is this fairly new? Has this never happened in the past or do you, did we just like like notice it also? I don't know.
It's been, I think it's been um intermittently happening.
I mean, I'm trying to see how a user could potentially open their place and be registered as signed out. I mean, we have code here. Um, I mean, we have code here from sixteen months ago that if they're not in version two, it logs them out. I don't know, you know. I hope that's necessarily the problem here since it's been over sixteen months.
If if they're not, what happens?
They're not in version two.
Okay.
So this is just code we had, I guess, a while back for when we wanted to force users to like the re onboard.
Version two, two, like two point oh?
Uh huh, yeah, two point oh.
Oh, that wouldn't be the case of these users. They're they're pretty active, consistent users.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I'm just looking at all the possibilities here. I mean. Yeah, that's the first thing that stands out other than that we have. Uh, let's see here, like, so we have a log out function that gets called, but. Um, okay, this one's an interesting one. Well. Good enough, okay, does it get from, let's see here. Sure, authentication, log out, there trash. Um, oh yeah, so it's the same thing. It goes back to just calling that. That same virgin to the code. Um, those are only places that. Yeah, this, that's the only place that can, like, this is the only piece of code that I see that could log out a user. Automatically without them. Taking any actions. Again, this has been around for like sixteen months now and. And it was because anybody who wasn't virgin two, we wanted them to re onboard.
Could it be misfiring in some way?
The lot, it's sitting use effect, it hasn't been touched. I I don't know. Now, other than that, like, other than this, I would say the only other option is the. Our, our. Like the you, those users are getting their their async storage is getting corrupt somehow, some way. Which could lead to potentially. Losing cuz like, when it comes to signing in, we have. We have two conditions that, and it's an or condition, that means. If onboarding is complete, that's a state that gets stored. If that's true, the user would stay signed in. The other one is, we look at the persistent user. Um, variable, and you also see if they're signed in. So there's like two things that have to fail. To to turn the users logged out or not signed in. And for those things to fail at the same time. That would tell me that either the login got, the log out got pulled or the persistent. Maybe the persistent data of the the async started data got corrupted maybe somehow, some way. These are my guesses, but. But again, no, 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 and then again, this is not the kind of problem which I can easily reproduce where I can like. Add some things to see if I can reproduce it, which also makes it that much harder to obviously debug and create, well. In terms of, yeah, like I said, the you, persistent user, all that, I mean, I don't. I didn't make any changes. I mean, did you make any recent changes to those? I I don't see the code changes. Is there anywhere you think that you touch that could potentially affect how persistent user stored works corrupts it, logs it out? Past few builds, so I'll say the past maybe two months.
No, also. As far as I remember, like, we've been working on onboarding a lot. And.
I I think this has doesn't have to do with onboarding cuz the users are already on boarded. It it it's cleared it out somewhere else, but you. Did he, did he touch how that is like changed editor or anything at all?
No, that's, yeah, no, this is not only what I was working on.
Yeah, I mean, same here. I don't, I don't, I didn't make any changes directly that could affect persistent user and.
Do we have session replays because there's a log that says. Like, do we have a session with the user being actually logged out?
I don't know, I think John had one.
Well, we have the one, we have his last last session and we have the one where they're at the signup screen.
Oh yeah, we're not gonna have a session replay cuz apparently what happens, I mean, is they like background the app, for example. And then come back, just like open it after a while. And they would find themselves on onboarding. So I guess the one that would have value for us is a session replay when they start on onboarding. If if there's anything logged, it would be there.
No, we need one before the lockdown.
Before.
Yeah, cuz before it might be, um. It might be either, uh, I don't know, like a faulty response. From a backend for some reason, and when it's like try to get in into the cache. It misses up with with the whole cache and the portal things. Oh, okay, like everything is thumbs up. Let me just reset the cache, you know? Hmm, maybe that, I'm I'm thinking so if we have a session replay before, maybe. So we can see the requests are being done and also there is a log that goes there that says cache is purged. So we know like when that log was happened, like the timestamp and compare it. Between which request or anything, yeah, the the session replay might be helpful. For the log down.
Yeah, I mean, I think John said you have both. The for that su- or that user, you said you have both session replays before they got logged out and after.
Yeah.
Can you send those over to maybe developments?
Yeah, there, it's there, um, if you go to development, the one. That Jerry replied to, I s- I said this user was unexpectedly logged out. You just tap on that. Link and then if you tap on their phone number, you'll see the one right before it also. I could give you.
Yes, it's.
Give you, I can give you the one right, right, just to make sure you got the right one.
Yeah, I have them on onboarding now, so I've started on onboarding.
Yeah, it's the only other one with the last twenty four hours. If you go to twenty, if you click on his. Phone number and then you just go to twenty four last events in twenty four hours, it's the one before it.
Okay, see it. So, okay, so let's see if they have, um. Also, uh, do you have any other users?
Kim Stewart. Yeah, Kim Stewart would be another one.
Do you have that session replay on hand?
Jerry, do you have that one for Kim Stewart?
Find any patterns between these users, like similar behaviors or anything that could.
Their key. Uh, two, three, one, six, four.
So the ones for this user, I noticed that they don't upload or 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 like so cuz like. Where where my, where my cash changes, even though I don't think they're related. Because they have, they're again, they touch different parts of the app, but. Mine are more when you upload stuff and this user did not do any uploading or to me did before. Before their app crashed on them.
And how did you came up like, he was like an expected little guy.
Well, I'm looking at session replays.
I.
And, you know, I'm looking at onboarding. And seeing, you would think they'd be all new users, right? Cuz it's onboarding, so. This guy's not a new user. He's a user that is there often. And so that's already weird, like why was he there earlier in the day? And put the app in the background and then. Next time he comes, he's going through onboarding. So he would have either had to delete the app. Or log out, but the session replay doesn't show him logging out. And, um, it's also in the same version, like if he had deleted it, he would be in eighty three, but he's still in eighty two. So, you know, it just looked like he got logged out unexpectedly and I don't think he complained because. I think he thinks like that's what happens, like if you leave an app, oh, you know, app or website open for too long, it logs you out, you know?
I have, I don't know, this is exactly Kim's issue, but. Uh, Kim was having an issue with the splash screen. I don't know if that affected her getting logged out. But here's something I do notice that she is a slow typer. And what we do is we send the typing status. When when she types. So, um, there's a lot of network activity going on. At that time.
Why is there a lot of network activity? What do you mean?
He's a slow typer, so like, we have that send typing status.
Okay.
So she like types slow and it keeps sending and resending the send typing status.
What what what, why rescinding?
Because she stops and starts typing again.
But. When she's just sitting there, we're sending, why not wait until she types another letter?
Well, so that's what it's doing. It's like, it's sending when she types, she just types low.
Okay, I see, so.
It's like, maybe she's types, I mean, it's happening multiple times in a second, so it leads me to think like, she is typing like just. To whatever like our little cooldown is on it.
Interesting. And she said, and that would be why she reports. Longer messages and it's not because the message is long, it's because there's a higher probability. Of a problem occurring, the longer you try something. That that could cause a problem if you keep trying it. It'll eventually cause it. So I get your theory, that makes sense, but why would it cause this problem?
Why would it cause the problem? I don't know what would exactly kick her out.
Yeah, like, why would it kick her out?
So, uh, is it, is that the same user you just sent me or the one you sent me right now? The one ending with, uh, one, five, one, zero.
Oh, one, five, one, zero.
Number, one number, that's, that's not the same person, right? Okay, so for that person, a weird thing is. When they onboard after they onboard, they literally just finish onboarding and then they stop, like they, they, that's where the session. Uh, session uh replay ends, so why are these, why did this user just go through onboarding just to close the app right after onboarding?
I see that kind of a lot too for some reason.
Well, his behavior doesn't make any sense. Why'd you go through onboarding unlike the onboarding just to just close it right after you're done?
Is this Kim or Jeff?
I think it's enough cuz this is the Kim's number. Yeah, this is the session replay you, um.
Okay. Well, it is what it is, right? Went through onboarding.
They're just using the app, the chat, and then they. Seems like they click the home button or something, or they didn't register.
But he shared, um, well, he thought about sharing a movie or a show. He thought about sharing a show.
On it to see what happens.
Yeah, he's gonna start the convo.
And then he doesn't start it, he he. Tries to swipe up to close that, but he he finds a maybe later button, so he clicks on it.
Yeah, and then he tapped on the notification. Banner.
Yeah, and then he just logs out right after.
But that might have backgrounded the app. That doesn't mean he like deliberately back, does that background it? Yeah, cuz if you go to settings, he might have gone to settings. Which looks like he backgrounded the app, so he may have been, maybe been still. In his mind, like working on the app, like going to his settings and ena- enabling notifications. Because the very last tap is on the notification banner. I mean, it's, I I wouldn't read too much into it, I mean. Users do unusual things, but I mean, he. Yeah, went through onboarding.
But wait, that notification banner only gives you a modal, says allow or don't allow, it doesn't navigate you anywhere. I just clicked it right now.
You've already denied the permission? Was he, had he been denied already?
Yeah, and so if I turn notifications off, I go back. Would be able to the front.
Right, here, oh, he hit later, so no, he didn't deny it, the permission, um. Yeah, so it's a little, right?
Well, we we don't see that model, right?
No. Sometimes we do, I think, it's un- unknown why. You won't see the one for location for sure. You'll see the modal for contacts and other things. It's kind of weird. But evidently, we didn't see it for this one. But regardless, why was he in onboarding, you know?
Yeah, can we try reaching out to this user and see what happens?
We can.
I mean, I don't, I don't like to, but like to do it a lot, but in some cases, it's just, uh. It's it's hard to guess, right? Like, or we we don't know what happened. If if maybe he did unsolve the app, which is unlikely, but. I guess.
It's possible.
Uh, it's good to know, it could save us some time if they respond.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm gonna ask everybody in the investor chat if they have had an unexpected login. I'll try and get some more information. Log out. I mean, we have this one, let's follow this one lead with. Kim and. Uh, the whatever, what were you saying, Jerry? Like, there's, we're send, we're doing an API call every time a letter is typed.
Oh, she's typing slow.
Yeah.
Typing status.
With what what could be problematic there?
I'm just saying. That's the only connection I can see between her typing a long message. And something happening while she was doing it. So what happens if get type, if send typing status fails?
Okay, good question. It's me, are you following that?
Uh, sorry, can you repeat that? I missed up.
What happens if send typing status fails?
It's what?
Send typing status.
That send typing status fails? Nothing.
I'm sure.
I mean, what do you mean by fails? Like the API fails or or what?
If something, it's just something, if it errors, so if, let's just say if the API call fails.
Well, it it was failing in the past and I fixed it, remember, but it it doesn't affect the app, but the user won't see anything happen. Cuz like. Failing when you were composing a message, you would have keys. So the API would fail, I mean, APIs can fail anytime, that doesn't, that I won't like log out or crash the app.
Well, I I have a theory. You guys, you saw the screenshot where. Century was saying that a user was in onboarding. But really, they were at the splash screens with the black background. What is happening there? What, why is century picking that up as an onboarding screen? And my theory is, okay, you know how. I've I've reported for a long time. I can be using the app and navigate and I'm sent to the splash screen. Like too much memory is built up or whatever has happened. Now, I'm not logged out unexpectedly. But maybe other people are. What is hap- why and isn't, aren't we doing a check to see if we're in onboarding at that point? And like, we would show onboarding under a certain situation? Right? Under a certain condition?
If if the app, let's say, yeah, somehow he this user got to that uh splash screen. And the app thinks this user needs to go to the onboard in, that means two things. Like his cache, it was deleted. Which is gonna happen by a log out or app, easily the app, whatever. That's the only way how the app, the cache will be deleted.
Or something we're not aware of.
Um, cuz like.
That's that's where I bet if we focus our investigation. We're gonna find that's where the.
I was, I was, I was gonna say like. If the cash still, the cash still there and the app thinks, no, the user, this user needs to go to onboard for some reason. Once he's gonna enter his phone number and verify it, it will be taken directly to the home screen. I know, like, we don't see it, but like I've seen it when I'm like, I'm I'm working or like I'm trying to make things faster. Yeah, if if you already had the cache there and somehow you got yourself in the onboarding. You verify your phone number, you're gonna be on the home screen.
Kim Stewart said something like that. She said, at first I thought. I had, I was like logged out, it was like a new account, but then it was okay. I don't know if we saw.
Onboarding, she didn't do a full onboarding, when, when she got back into onboarding, she was at the, um. Hey, good to see you, let's find your friends.
Right, but not the phone number, what Amina's thinking, she would be at the phone number screen.
Right.
Now, there's also a possibility session replay didn't show prior to that.
Yeah, I, I matched it in Amplitude.
Okay, so that's a clue, I mean, she didn't go to the phone number screen. She was at the screen where it's like, let's find your friends.
And where she was before?
She was typing a message. Like, she was in the, she was in the chat log, their chat message, typing.
That's weird.
Right.
If it's, if it is, it's gonna be the first screen on the onboarding. But, that a random screen for users to land on, so let's, let's find their friends.
Well, we've moved things around in onboarding lately.
Yeah, but we did not move, um. Like, the navigation regarding the onboard, we were like specifically focusing on changing stuff inside the screens. Uh, themselves, but not like.
Yeah, a couple screens were rearranged, like, when we asked for notification, cool kid screen was rearranged.
That's, like, we did not rearrange, we just, like. Added this new step, like, we did not say, I would, I would like, get, if we're like, hmm, changes. Screen places and everything, but we did not, and, and, um. It's find your friend, is it, it's, it's, it's like, let's find friends, the first screen after you've reached a phone number?
Yeah, wait.
Like the welcome, it's like welcome, enable location, right?
Is it locations first? There you are then, let's pick some friends and check.
So to be there, that's, I don't know, either like we have missing session replays. Or, I, I don't see how that could happen.
Yeah, he said he confirmed it in, um. In Amplitude too. Yeah, after you authenticate, the first thing is. Find me. And then pick some friends.
Yeah, so.
But why would it go to the finding screen if she already had location permission enabled?
We don't, I don't think, so we skip it if there is a permission, if we have it, regardless.
Okay, but I, don't you think we're on the, on the right track, though, if. Okay, the session replay is telling, is saying onboarding, on the splash screen. That's a fact, I said, I sent the screenshot into the development channel.
I would not count a lot on that thing that goes on top that says onboarding, I would not really count on it a lot, it's not like dynamic. Cause like, I remember, like, I was seeing session replay, this is onboarding, but they're like, oh.
But it's, um, not every time, it's only when I see the splash, the splash screen was right before this. So isn't the, isn't the splash screen doing a check to see if it should start even onboarding?
It's not the splash screen technically that does it, because. The splash screen, it's different, like, we don't even have the code, like, the code for the splash screen, it's not like a code, it's not like, I think we did it. It's like a thing that's automatically for every app. It's the first screen that you see on splash screen, you just like you get to hide it.
But during, during that, there is, um, things running functions.
Yeah, during that. I think it's gonna be always onboarding. We, uh, let me, let me, let me verify that, if it's not. Let me just pick some random session replay. Yeah, so I, I just find one, so, I can send it to you, you can see, it's, it's, um. It's, it says, it says onboarding, but the user, it's like in home screen, so. Let me send it to you, there's this one. And this is the first one that I clicked on, you know?
But they don't all say that, otherwise, every single session replay that I look for where the screen equals onboarding, they would all, I would just see every. I would see every session replay. I think you, you're seeing one where they came from a splash screen.
Yes, and it says onboarding, but after that, they all like to the home screen.
Right, that's like the one I sent into the Slack channel, is that sometimes, when a user. Comes from the splash screen. It's saying onboarding, because. Are we just labeling that screen as an onboarding screen in Amplitude, or, uh? Would it be? Where's it, I don't know where it gets that data from, to, to label it.
Um, Century, like, i- it knows where, like, which screen you are on, and.
So that screen is classified, labeled as onboarding?
So, not bec- not that screen specifically, but like, it's. It's like, it's, you're gonna say it's like kind of the default thing that goes for. But like. Yeah, I get what you, what, what you're saying, but like, again. Here's it, it says onboarding, but the user, after that, it was like in home.
Right, just like the one that they were in the chat lobby.
Yeah, and that, it did not change, so.
But isn't there a risk? That we send them back through onboarding right there?
I mean, it's something. I, I'm trying to see what could fail, it's gonna be only cache, because it's the only cache that we rely on, to know whether this user is logged in or not. Cause like, we save his session to the, the, his storage, the device storage. And that's how we tell, like, with that, um, if that's. Maybe there is like a bug hidden there that we don't know, that's only surfaced with, uh, specific. Conditions.
Well, we kind of have two problems with it, it. Goes to that splash screen too, too much. And then that splash screen. Can be, um. A participant in sending a user back through onboarding occasionally. So, we're already too many times seeing it, like, we're getting, you know, like, the app is refreshing, like, reloading. Too often. To begin with, I've been saying this for a long time. And then, on top of that. It can't, it's prone to. Take people through onboarding sometimes. Not a lot, but sometimes. So. I'd like to, I want to solve all, as much as we can, here. So, uh. How do we prevent someone from getting, going through onboarding when it restarts?
Again, we rely on the cache, so maybe we do some more login there, or, uh, uh, um. Cause like, we still, we're not sure what's going on. I don't know what's going on, like, because, uh, I'm looking to the code right now, um. And that's how we decide if this user is signed in or not. Since, it's, if, I don't know, let's see, if it's, it's signed in. It's coming from the cache, so.